You mean it's 37 in the Hesaton Guam's back in session from recess. Again, we were on second reading. We were on resolution number 29-37 COR. I apologize again for all the technical issues that we have been having over the last couple of days. Hopefully, we have them resolved now and we have a backup plan. So we left off with Senator Perez. You are recognized on resolution 29-37.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of resolution 29-37. The importance of this resolution, that it recognizes that contamination issues have no have no boundaries when it comes to Agent Orange, and especially when it comes to our island. I think because, you know, I was there in the public hearing where we had a civilian who worked at Anderson Air Force Base, and she wonders whether her exposure to Agent Orange affected the health of her son, who had contracted cancer. And so that's just one story, and I'm sure as the retiring speaker before me spoke about many people that in our community that has suffered cancer as a result of exposure to toxins. You know, we all are very grateful for the PAC Act becoming law, because it expanded compensation for those veterans who were exposed to Agent Orange as a result of their service in the military and in Vietnam and in other places like Guam. And, you know, Guam is definitely was a staging point. So Agent Orange amongst many different herbicides were heavily used. It was a tool in warfare, because guerrilla warfare was used in Vietnam. And so the these herbicides were used to deforest Vietnam, so they can see the combatants in Vietnam. And Guam is one of those points that were we were staged. Basically, a lot of these herbicides came through. There was and imagine the quantities of herbicides that were used. And this is way before the time, before even the Environmental Protection Agency came into existence. So there was less of that awareness of these impacts of these chemicals being brought in, let alone the huge quantities of chemicals. And the other thing is that, you know, through the testimony, many veterans who supported the recognition of Guam becoming part of the PAC Act, you know, thanks to them, that they, you know, Guam is recognized and included in this important piece of legislation, this hallmark legislation, which would basically streamline access to healthcare for those that are suffering from many of the illnesses that are associated and illnesses that are associated with Agent Orange. And just to reiterate, some of these include high blood pressure, monoclonal stomatopathy, and a whole list of cancers: bladder cancer, chronic B-cell leukemia, Hodgkin's disease, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, prostate cancer, respiratory cancers, including lung cancer, soft tissue sarcomas, AL amyloidosis, chlorachne, diabetes mellitus type 2, which our community has a high rate of, hypothyroidism, ischemic heart disease, Parkinsonism, Parkinson's disease, peripheral neuropathy, early onset, porphyria cutaneous tarda. So a lot of these conditions we recognize because they have stricken our families. And the importance of this resolution is that, you know, with the help of our residents and those in the Congress, I think the recognition needs to be expanded to not just those who served in the military with their lives, but also the non-civilians that were in close contact, unknowingly in close contact with this very harmful chemical, and many of them, and not of their will. You know, this is a very personal issue. You know, there are people in our family that have died from cancer, and these particular cancers, there are people in our family that have high blood pressure, that have diabetes. And it's really with this resolution as a voice, we're making this a legislative priority, that our community seeks compensation and justice for being exposed to these harmful chemicals without our knowledge, but yet we, to this day, experience the impacts. And so I rise in support of this resolution, and I do hope that it achieves success and that our people can receive the healthcare to address these illnesses. And I think more importantly, at this point, that we can prevent them. I mean, moving forward, we know that these toxins have no borders. They filter into our water eventually. And so there has to be a way to ensure that our environment is clean, so that our people can be healthy. Sutus Massey.
Sutus Massey, Senator Perez. On the resolution, Senator, did you read then Senator Duenys?
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of resolution 29-37. Many of my colleagues mentioned the devastation of Agent Orange and those individuals who have been plagued by it through cancer or other type of diseases. I know that many of our public, our community, watches these sessions, and they listen to what's going on. A lot of times, they don't have access to these reports that are created, these committee reports, in which many of the stories from these individuals come forward. And I just thought at this time, because this particular testimony that came out really touched me, and I just wanted to read a few things from it. It says, "Hafadeen greetings from the Pollock's family. With all due respect, I humbly request that your good office include my parents' names and myself. Mr. Betwill Asu Pollock, who was born on," and didn't give the date, "passed away," who passed away, "and my mom, Juliette B. Pollock, born," didn't give the date. She, she's still alive and living in California today. And I, Johnston B. Pollock, currently living in Guam, traveling back and forth between Guam and California. We have a son in the military service station in Guam, born and raised here. We are victim, we are the victim and survivors of Agent Orange, with the presumption, disease, exposure to Agent Orange chemical, presumptive disease. Again, I am Johnston Betwill Pollock, and I am a U.S. citizen and a resident of Guam. My father told me a lot of his secret story in his account during and after he was hired as a contract seaman when he was a young, when he was young, to work on the vessels that transported Agent Orange, 55-gallon drums from military activities in the U.S., ports en route to Vietnam, Guam, and Johnston Atoll in the Marshall Islands during the U.S. Navy, who administered Guam and Saipan during and from 1950 to 1977. My dad was traveling on the ship between the U.S. ports in Vietnam, Guam, and Johnston Atoll. My dad told me, he named me after Johnston Atoll, because it's a military secret base for chemical agents for nuclear experiments and testing. It is nearby quadrillion military base in the Marshall Islands. I remember traveling with my parents when I was a little boy between Guam and the Marshall Islands and Micronesia Islands. It was fun, but I never knew those vessels were transporting and carrying chemical agents. Before my dad passed away, he told my mom to stop eating the fish that was caught in Johnston Atoll and some islands nearby, islands in the Marshall Islands, because he was told by the captain and the crews, meeting announcement that there were no more catching fish in the ocean of Johnston Atoll Island after the Agent Orange was dumped into the sea off Johnston Atoll Bikini and Wheat Atoll and Wake Island. It was late. We'd been eating those fish that was caught in the ocean of Johnston Atoll and nearby contaminated islands with the exposure of Agent Orange. Only after what my dad learned, we stopped eating fish from the Marshall Islands. Unfortunately, my dad was diagnosed with many complicated ailments: heart disease, liver cancer, skin disorder disease, cancer that affect his blood cells, high blood, prostate cancer, and diabetes. My mom is very ill today, at 84 years old. I'm also diagnosed with skin disease disorder, similar to my dad's skin disease, diabetes, and prostate issues. So sad. I appreciate your time and effort caring for our constituents who deserve the Agent Orange compensation, compensation. You can always reach me via email or call my home phone number. On Guam, my Guam cell gives this number. And then he signs off, thanking Senator Luhon. He was named after Johnston Atoll. Johnston Pollock. This is a very touching story, and I hope those who are listening today see that he's not the only one that's been affected, but there are many more and many more stories. What can we do? Well, we're doing as much as we can. Our voices need to be heard. Our resolutions need to be addressed, and we can never stop, stop trying. At this time, Madam Speaker, I ask everyone to please keep those in your hearts and your prayers, those suffering today from cancer, from all these diseases that come from Agent Orange and other radiation exposure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duenys, you are recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. And I certainly rise in full support of resolution 29-37. You know, Madam Speaker, when I look at the efforts by yourself and those that you mentioned during your testimony, it reminds me of a gospel song, "It only takes a spark to get a fire burning." You know, I think back to all the hearings that have been held and all the discussions and all the individuals who would come to this agos body and spend hours and hours giving us all the background information of what this terrible poison had, what they believe had done to ravage many of their family members through the years. And it's a testament to how that persistence and insistence really can bring about redress. There's one individual, and I have to bring up his name because I have just a short story, Robert Celestial. I've known him for over 22 years now and his battle and advocacy on this issue. Recently, on one of our long hearings that went close to 10 o'clock at night, he stayed, and I walked outside, and he approached me and he said, "Hafadee, Chris." He goes, "Man, you've been at this for a long time." And he said, "This was another one of those long hearings. How do you do it?" And I looked at him like, "Robert, how do I do this? How have you done what you've done for the years that you've done it?" And you know, one thing about Robert, not to take away anything from anyone else who's always been persistent on this issue, that man has like a smiling soul. You know, he's, he's battling something that he believes has also affected him. He's battling an issue that is, can be controversial and takes a lot of persistence and, and would make some angry, rightfully so, on some different levels. But his demeanor, as he presented himself, he, he must really have a peace in his soul, because he never came across as angry or combative to me anytime. Passionate, yes. So many of our colleagues today have discussed all the salient parts of this resolution and the issues surrounding Agent Orange and other contaminations that were something that hopefully, because of what we do today, will not happen going forward in the future. So I didn't want to continue to enumerate that, because my colleagues have done such a great job, but I wanted to once again recognize this particular individual. I know he probably would be bashful and shy and maybe a little upset with me for bringing up his name, but he certainly is someone who I hold very dear in my heart and pray for daily. And also, just to once again say to our people, you know, as my colleague mentioned, I know many do pay attention to what we do here, that persistence will get results. And when you believe in something, hold it dear to your heart and fight with everything you got in order to be able to accomplish that mission. And I think that, once again, I want to congratulate Senator Luhon, glad to be a co-sponsor of this resolution going forward, and carrying the torch really, and standing on the shoulders of those who have come before to fight this very, very righteous fight. And hopefully now, as he mentioned, we were on a radio show together today, that we have received half of the loaf, and thank God, you know, it's precedence, right? And so now we'll sit back and pray for the other half a loaf to come forward and to bring some comfort to families who really only want the ability to live their life with dignity and the possibility to become disease-free. So with that, Madam Speaker, certainly looking forward to voting on this resolution, and I'm praying that it will get unanimous support. Sutus Massey.
Sutus Massey, Senator Duenys. On the resolution, anyone else? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too am in full support of this resolution. Wanted to just first start by wishing the best to our friend, Mr. Robert Celestial. Great guy, awesome, awesome man, great man. Has tirelessly fought for awareness and action on this cause and others, despite never holding an elected office. He has been the man on this issue. And of course, got to give Speaker Tulahe here props as well. But one great thing about Mr. Celestial is he's so helpful. Anytime I get a veteran who calls me about, oh, they're, they're running into standstill at the VA, or they can't figure out this, can't figure out that, are they eligible for this or that? I always tell him, I got a friend, Uncle Robert, I'm going to give you his number, and you know, when he has time, he'll reach out and call you, and he's very knowledgeable, and, and it never fails. Every time I send a number over to Mr. Robert Celestial, and then I circle back with the person asked him to call, they always said, "Oh, man, Chris, he called me right away." And so that's just the kind of guy he is, that no matter what he's going through, has never hesitated to try and uplift others and to raise awareness on this issue. And the author of this resolution had said in his opening that he hoped this resolution passed unanimously, and I think it will. But let's not forget the days when many people doubted people like Mr. Robert Celestial. Many people said they were Kaduku. What are you talking about, Agent Orange? Even the federal government denied and lied about the usage of Agent Orange on our island. When I was a member of the media, I interviewed the late Master Sergeant, Air Force Master Sergeant Leroy Foster, who was stationed on Guam and who had provided a whole lot of sworn testimony, basically saying that, yes, he did spray Agent Orange all over the island. He even dumped barrels of it, as he was ordered to do so, over cliff lines, down hills. You know what else runs downhill? Water. Running right into our aquifer. Yet, for decades, the federal government lied, deceived, covered up, that they were directly responsible for this and all of the impacts that our island and our people have suffered since then. It wasn't until 2022 that the federal government came out and acknowledged and admitted finally what many service members and families of veterans and people here on Guam already knew. And again, that's why it's very important for us to never forget this legacy of contamination and lies that the military has left behind. But I, a day when we ask questions about the military, they label us anti-military, obstructionist. I'm sure that this resolution is going to pass unanimously, but let's not forget the lessons of the past, that whistleblowers and people come out and tell the truth, and many times, we're all too skeptical, all too quick to bury them, to call them crazy. And so I hope we learn the lessons that the people like Mr. Celestial and Master Sergeant Foster and all the countless veterans who have served both under that flag and our flag. And let's make sure that, that we do our best to avoid being on the receiving end of the federal government's sins. And so I ask that we pass this resolution unanimously, and we, we take what we have learned from this and apply it on all of the issues affecting our island moving forward. To do anything else would be a disservice and a disrespect to the people that this resolution supports. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the resolution? Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of this resolution that has been long overdue. We acknowledge through this resolution a grave injustice committed against the innocent civilian residents of Guam, who were exposed to the toxic herbicide, Agent Orange, by the U.S. military. Agent Orange, a dioxin-laden defoliant, has been irrefutably linked to a plethora of severe health issues ranging from cancer to birth defects, among others. Armed military personnel who served in Vietnam, my father included, were directly exposed to this chemical and have already been recognized and compensated for their sufferings. Yet, a group that has long been overlooked are the residents of Guam, our fellow citizens who lived on their lands and faced inadvertent exposure. We're not here to point fingers or reopen old wounds. We are here to address an oversight, to give voice to those who are voiceless, and to provide justice to the unrecognized sufferers. This is about justice and empathy. Our fellow citizens in Guam did not volunteer to be exposed to this harmful agent. Their exposure was inadvertent, a consequence of our military's decision during a time that was very difficult in our history. Their suffering is as real as any soldier's. By passing this resolution, we're not just compensating, we are acknowledging a pain, a trauma that has been passed down through the generations. We are sending a message that we see them, we hear them, and we stand with them. Many of these victims have been living in the shadows for decades, waiting for recognition, validation, and support. By addressing this oversight, we can shine a light on this dark chapter of our history and set a precedent for transparency, accountability, and kindness. In conclusion, this resolution is not just about financial compensation, it's about moral restitution. It's about acknowledging the past, learning from it, and making amends. Let's stand united in recognizing the non-military residents of Guam who were exposed to Agent Orange and provide them with the compensation they so rightfully deserve. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? On the resolution, if, if no one else, then the sponsor may close on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, colleagues. I want to thank all my colleagues for their support, looking unanimous, and I'm sure even the ones that are excused from, from session, they would be in support as well. Want to thank each and every one of you for the support. Likewise, recognize all the folks that have been instrumental. This is not the first resolution, as has been mentioned before, and even when I first got in legislature back in the 27th, and I think that was 2003, even then, resolutions before that were introduced. So we're looking at that alone over 23 years, not to mention years before that, that resolutions were, were adopted and forwarded to the, to Congress. The half loaf that Senator Duenys is talking about is, at least, we've finally got half recognition in the sense that the PAC Act was passed in 2022, which recognized, of course, the military folks that were here that were exposed finally. So will this be the last resolution? I'm hoping and praying it will be. But it's going to be an upward uphill battle as well, to be able to, to get this funding for the civilian side of the, of the House. But it's a fight that we must continue. It's a cause that we must continue. Again, precedent had been set in regards to identifying and finally recognizing that exposure happened here on our island. As was mentioned in the public, in public hearing, I won't mention her name, I didn't get permission to mention her name tonight, but it was previous to mention her name tonight, but it was previously mentioned by a previous speaker regarding an ailment of her son. If I'm not mistaken, it was a blood disease. And they were fortunate enough because their family had the means to be able to go off island for the proper diagnoses. And what made her, the mother of this child, think that it was, you know, it was Agent Orange, was the doctor had asked her, were you ever in Vietnam? Were you ever in Vietnam, exposed to any of the chemicals over there? No, never in Vietnam. But she did work on base, in Anderson Air Force Base, where this chemical was used. They had the means to be able to get the diagnosis and treatment. And we're glad to say that that baby is well today. But as previous speakers have said, their family members have been diagnosed with ailments that even within my family, both my mom and dad died of cancer. Ailments that often relate, I said, SPAM, the Tungkatni, that. But now we get to learn that all these ailments are attributed to a lot of what we had to endure. Not, and again, the chemicals that were used, I know folks from SRF testified that, you know, they would bring these boats that went down the Mekong Delta, I think it was, and they said they were so sticky from film, from the sprays. And all they were wearing was just, I think, a mask. That was it. And quite a few have, of course, succumbed to illnesses that, you know, of unknown origin. So with that, Madam Speaker, I want to thank again my colleagues for supporting this resolution, yeah, resolution, and thank my predecessors as well for their introduction of the resolution. And the effort, of course, from everyone who had fought for this, for the downwinders, no different from this, Mr. Robert Celestial, who we pray will have a speedy recovery for their efforts. But this fight doesn't end. It's still an uphill battle. But are we seeing the light in the end of the tunnel? I think so. Like I said, we got a half loaf, so let's work for that other half. And make the folks who were exposed as well, who were not veterans, but worked alongside them, and the folks, again, who live by these places, who, that were sprayed, let's make them whole. And that's what we ask of Congress. And I'm looking forward to the passage and sending to Congress and working closely, of course, with our Congressman Jim Moylan to be able to introduce it and find the source of funding to be able to work with his colleagues. Hopefully, they'll be able to get a speaker pretty soon. And be able to move on and get us a little closer to closing this chapter and ending this long, hard-fought battle. With that, Madam Speaker, I want to, again, thank you and my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Oh, yeah. Madam Speaker, I move to Resolution 29-37 CR to bottom of the third reading.
All right. On that motion to place the resolution into the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Resolution Number 223-37 LS. Senator Lujano, you are recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I move to place, excuse me, Resolution 223-37 LS relative to standing in solidarity with the Jewish communities, supporting the people of Israel, and condemning the horrendous attack and war crimes of Hamas that occurred in October of 2023 in the third reading file. And I would like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My fellow colleagues, people of Guam, please let us declare that the people of Guam via the Guam Legislature stand with the people of Israel. All of us know from the headlines, just little over 10 days ago, Hamas, a terrorist organization based in Gaza. My chief of staff has nothing to do with that, although his name is Vic Gaza, he has nothing to do with that, okay? With the support of the Moaz of Iran, brutally attacked the people of the country of Israel. Hamas attacked with missiles and with organized terrorist militias invading Israel's sovereignty, sovereign territory, and massacring civilian men, women, and children. As Hamas invaded, they terrorized, brutalized, murdered, raped without remorse, sparing no one. In their relentless cruelty, they raped and tortured many women and killed them, declaring Israeli life as worthless. They have taken innocent Israelis and other international citizens as hostages. They are treating the lives of innocents as pawns in a violent and terrible suicide mission. We have to remember, in addition to Israelis, Hamas killed people from 35 different countries, including the United States and the Philippines. There was a Filipina caregiver who chose to stay with her Jewish patient, caregiving for her, bedridden at that. Patient said, flee, save your life. She decided to stay with her patient. They both got killed. The world has rarely seen such horrific act of terrorism. There is no justification for such violence. For the slaughter of innocent civilians, men, women, and children of Israel, over 1,200 Israelis were murdered and citizens of other nationalities were also killed. Not since the Holocaust have so many Jews been murdered in cold blood. Hamas is a terrorist organization that reign terror on Israel in an unprovoked attack. Needless to say, this resolution is in opposition of the terrorist organization. Hamas and their followers, not the innocent civilians of the Hamas Strip. This is the same thing as condemning the actions of Al Qaeda, ISIS, Abu Shaeef, Hezbollah, and other extremist terrorist groups. The coordinated attack on October 7, 2023, was barbaric and targeted innocent civilians who were unarmed, defenseless, and vulnerable. This cannot be tolerated. This must be stopped from ever happening again. My colleagues, we must acknowledge that we are a U.S. territory, a developed Western civilization. We are not excluded from their hate. God forbid we ever encounter them in their wrath. We would suffer the same fate as the reasoned victims in Israel. We should and must declare our support to the people of Israel. We should let our voices be heard. The democratically elected 37th Guam Legislature supports the country and people of Israel. There is no middle ground. Israel was attacked. Hamas is a terrorist organization. Hamas was filled with hate and proudly demonstrated that to the world, their desire to eliminate the right of Israel to exist, killing innocent men, women, and children who were just going about their day, the festival-goers who were looking to have a good time with their friends. This could be any of us. It could have been any of us attending that festival in Israel. We should send a message loud and clear. We stand with Israel. We stand for peace, and we will not tolerate extremists, terrorists, brutality, and barbaric My colleagues, I ask for your support. Pass Resolution 23-37 LS. With that, Madam Chair, or Madam Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe in the principles of transparency, public involvement, and due diligence in the consideration of all resolutions put forth before the legislative body. The resolution concerning Guam's support for Israel against Hamas is a significant statement that impacts our international posture and our local sentiments. It is essential that such an impactful resolution is not only thoroughly examined, but also subjected to a comprehensive public hearing. This ensures that the voice of our community is heard and that their opinions and concerns are given weight in the final decision-making process. In the spirit of openness and democracy, I move for the return of the resolution to committee for a public hearing. This action will guarantee that every stakeholder, from community leaders to concerned citizens, has an opportunity to share their views and insights on the matter. Only then can we be confident that our stance as a representative body genuinely mirrors the sentiments of the people of Guam. I urge our fellow members to prioritize the principles of democratic governance that guide our republic by supporting this call to return the resolution to committee for a thorough and inclusive public hearing, because our people deserve to have a say, and our people deserve no less. And with that, Madam Chair, I yield my time and motion to send this back to committee so we could have a thorough public hearing as it deserves.
On the motion to send, refer the bill back to the committee, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. On the motion to return to the committee, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Parkinson, you still have the floor. All right. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Sinicalis, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Over lunchtime, my daughter stormed into my office, and she says, what are you doing? Why are you supporting Israel? And my daughter knows where I stand on this issue, but she wanted to make a point. After my deployment, I actively tried to convert to Judaism. I believe my soul was Jewish. I have always supported Israel. I loved Israel's innovation and technology, and I love what they brought to the world. One of my earlier campaign signs, I actually wrote in Hebrew on the bottom, Tikun Olam, and it means to repair the world. And I was not on island when the events unfolded in Israel, but it was horrific. It was very, very heartbreaking. Why? Because my soul believes that Israel should be a country of its own. But also, I believe that a two-state solution is something that we need to work on for peace, for Tikun Olam, so we can help repair the world. And so I had to explain to my daughter, and she, we, she was kind of brought to tears that after we exchanged and we got to a better understanding, that we have to condemn the wrong, the rapes, and the murder and the massacre. And this resolution just does that, and it also supports Israel and their right to exist and Palestine as well. I really believe that there's a compromise in there somewhere, that two people, different peoples, can live together. I think that's, I think that's what the world wants. And so with that, I support Israel. And let us support them to bring those who have hurt, the innocent, and let's help them bring those people to justice and find some way where we can live together, both sides, and repair the world. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinicalis. On the resolution, Senator Duane, you are recognized.
Siis mosi, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Resolution 223-37. Madam Speaker, the author did an outstanding job in explaining exactly what this resolution is about. This resolution is about standing with a people to whom unspeakable barbarism and atrocities were committed by terrorists. Madam Speaker, even amongst the oppression of the past, present, and oppression that will take place in the future, like the Uyghurs in China and all kinds of different unfathomable things that we don't understand how a human being created by God can carry out. There can never be a reason to excuse this type of action, and I will condemn it in any and every form, regardless of who is the perpetrator. Madam Speaker, this is not just a dispute over land, countries, philosophies, religions. This is not a competition or a fight between two warring nations where warriors This is not a competition or a fight between two warring nations where warriors will be subjected and subject themselves to all kinds of brutal manner of death. This is innocent human beings by the hundreds, living a normal daily life. Elderly, infirm, children, I'm not going to go through it because we've all seen it and heard it, but it needs to be spoken of. None of us who honestly are God-fearing individuals who believe and care about life can ever, ever support any taking of life, but most especially innocent life. Innocent human life. The geopolitical situation surrounding what's going to take place in the Middle East and the actors even throughout this entire world will handle itself. Only God knows what tomorrow holds. But today, I stand and say no to barbarism, no to murdering of babies, no to the taking of innocent life. That is what this resolution says. This resolution does not wave a flag and run down the middle of the street and take a side on what nation we believe in. The support of Israel is because of the unspeakable barbarism that took place. And if another resolution hits this floor that can be substantiated from any other country that does such a thing, I will vote in favor of it as well. I will not select which country. I will not select based on my faith. If ISIS-type activity that has absolutely no respect for life, probably of any form, but most especially for human form, is committed by any other country and I or myself or anyone introduces a resolution on this floor, doggone it, I'm going to vote for that. That is why I support this resolution. Genocide in any form, fashion or manner must always be opposed by decent human beings. I pray for this resolution's passage. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution. Is there anyone else on the resolution? Senator Perez, on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have some documents that I would like to append to today's journal session as well as appended to the resolution. It's in the file, the drive, so for those that need time to look at it, but if I can start speaking on it. And actually, I would like to proffer an amendment, so I think that would be getting sent to the clerks at this moment. I just want to reiterate the sentiments of one of the previous speakers that, you know, this resolution did not receive any public hearing. And, you know, considering what's happening, you know, it's a fast-moving situation and it's basically the conflict is escalating or we're seeing more civilians being killed. And this is really concerning. We're living in such a dangerous time. You know, we have Ukraine, Russia-Ukraine conflict which hasn't been resolved and now we're dealing with this Israeli Hamas conflict. I think it's important to remember this time, you know, since this conflict has been longstanding since the development of the Israeli state. But there was a point in time when the opponents did reach a Nobel, they both got Nobel prizes, Nobel Peace Prizes in the seventies. No matter how difficult this conflict was, they were able to reach a semblance of peace in the seventies. Those that were awarded was Manokem Begin, Prime Minister Manokem Begin, and Anwar Sadat, Egyptian President Anwar Sadat. And so in thinking about, you know, what does it take to turn this situation around? I think, you know, we don't want to see more civilians killed. A lot of them are women and children. They are not the ones fighting this war, but they are the innocent bystanders on both sides. I think, you know, it's really sad to see that our world is increasingly becoming a dangerous place to live in it and more so in these locations. We're also seeing UN, people carrying out humanitarian missions are being killed in this region. And so people that are trying to bring peace to this area are themselves at risk. Journalists are being killed, so we don't have really a full account of what is happening. We hear stories about human shields that military situates themselves in an area which is surrounded by civilians. And so this is really concerning and it has been brought, there have been human rights cases brought to the United Nations Human Rights Commission on both sides. And one of the documents that I want to share with this body is a joint statement put out October twenty-first of this week. And so I think, and we're seeing more, even the UN General Assembly leader has called for a ceasefire. But if I can read this, this joint statement put out by the World Health Organization. It says, "A first but limited shipment of lifesaving humanitarian supplies from the United Nations and the Egyptian Red Crescent entered Gaza today on twenty trucks passing through the Rafa Crossing. It will provide urgently needed lifeline to some of the hundreds of thousands of civilians, mostly women and children who have been cut off from water, food, medicine, fuel and other essentials. But it is only a small beginning and far from enough. More than 1.6 million people in Gaza are in critical need of humanitarian aid. Children, pregnant women and the elderly remain in the most vulnerable. Nearly half of Gaza's population are children. With so much civilian infrastructure in Gaza, damage or destroyed in nearly two weeks of constant bombings, including shelters, health facilities, water, sanitation, electrical systems, time is running out before mortality rates could skyrocket due to disease outbreaks and lack of healthcare capacity. Hospitals are overwhelmed with casualties. Civilians face mounting challenges in accessing essential food supplies. Health facilities no longer have fuel and are running on small amounts they have secured locally. These are expected to run out in the next day or so. Water production capacity is at five percent of normal levels. Pre-positioned humanitarian supplies have already been depleted. Vulnerable people are at greatest risk and children are dying at alarming rate and being denied their right to protection, food, water and healthcare. Nearly one-third of the population of Palestine was food insecure before this conflict in Gaza. Today's stocks and shops are nearly exhausted and bakeries are closing while tens of thousands of people are displaced, unable to cook or safely purchase food. We call for humanitarian ceasefire along with immediate unrestricted humanitarian access throughout Gaza to allow humanitarian actors to reach civilians in need, save lives, prevent future human suffering. Flows of humanitarian aid must be at scale and sustained and allow all Gazans to preserve their dignity. We call for a safe, sustained access to water, food, health, including sexual reproductive health, fuel which is necessary to enable essential services. We call for the protection of all civilians and civilian infrastructure in Gaza, including healthcare facilities. We call for the protection of humanitarian workers in Gaza who are risking their lives in the service of others. And we call for the utmost respect of international humanitarian law by all parties. Gaza was a desperate humanitarian situation before the most recent hostilities. It is now catastrophic. The world must do more." Then I would also like to point out another document that I would like to append. It's basically by the PBS NewsHour. It talks about the rules of war. It states, "The rules of armed conflict are governed by a set of internationally recognized laws and resolutions, including the UN Charter, which prohibits aggressive wars and allows countries to write to self-defense." It goes on to say that, so some of the things that are problematic here that we're seeing. So it says, "The four conventions agreed upon in nineteen forty-nine set out that civilians, the wounded, prisoners must be treated humanely in wartime. They ban murder, torture, hostage-taking, humiliating and degrading treatment and require fighters to treat the other side sick and wounded. The rules apply both to wars between nations and conflicts like that between Israel and Hamas in which one of the parties is not a state. Another key document in the law of war is the founding Rome Statute of International Criminal Courts, which defines as war crimes acts including intentional attacks on civilians, civilian settlements or humanitarian workers, destroying property where not military necessary, sexual violence and unlawful deportation. Other agreements ban certain types of weapons such as chemical or biological munitions. Most, but not all countries have signed up to these." It goes on to say, "Hamas has fired thousands of rockets at Israeli towns and cities on October seventh that sent hundreds of gunmen across the border from Gaza. They attacked and killed civilians, including children and elderly people in their homes and neighborhoods, and kidnapped scores of others. Israel says at least fourteen hundred people died and one hundred ninety-nine others were abducted." It goes on to say, "Heim Abraham, a lecturer at the Law University College of London, says evidence of crimes is clear. They massacred civilians at their homes, they kidnapped civilians, taking them hostage. All of these things are clearly war crimes." And that these can be prosecuted in other ways. And so the question is, has Israel's response been legal? It states, "The Israeli military has pounded Hamas-ruled Gaza with airstrikes, blocked deliveries of food, water, fuel, electricity and told people to leave their northern half of the strip ahead of a possible ground invasion. Gaza authorities said Thursday that," so this is already outdated, it's October nineteenth, "said Thursday that three thousand seven hundred eighty-five Palestinians have been killed and nearly twelve thousand five hundred others are wounded during the days of bombardment." So these are some of the problems with the conflict and escalating casualties here of civilians which need to be addressed. And so the amendment that I have is being passed out, is it being passed out? Yeah, I think what's, so I would like to proffer this amendment on behalf of calling for really a meaningful solidarity with Israel and the Hamas and the Palestinians, sorry. I think there, you know, in the matter of a few weeks, we're seeing an escalation of violence of civilians. And in order to bring, I mean, as my retiring speaker has said, you know, we really need to bring peace to this area which has been elusive for a long time. And, but we got to start somewhere. And that first step is really a ceasefire. You know, I think that's one of the first things that is needed to prevent further deaths of innocent bystanders. And so this resolution states, "Relative to calling for peace and a ceasefire and solidarity with all civilians experiencing violence and casualties in the Israel-Hamas conflict, condemning all acts of violence in the Israel-Hamas conflict starting October twenty-three." And I think, you know, the reason why I'm proffering this, obviously for the obvious reasons, you know, this is a resolution that did not get a public hearing. And it's important to bring voices to those that haven't, that voices within our community that haven't been able to express, express their opinions and, which I think is vital. I mean, when we talk about democracy, right? It's important that we include the voices in our community. And of course, as elected leaders, we will try our best to represent them. But I think there needs to be, really, we need to take a pause on this and think about, you know, what is it truly, how can we truly express solidarity with this region? You know, we want to be able to exude peace and it starts from really the processes that we practice here today about allowing free speech, expression, not cutting off debate. I think this is what engenders peace in our world. And so I ask for my colleague's support, Situs Massey.
All right, is there any objection to appending the documents to the record? Is there any objection? To appending the documents to the record? To the record of our discussion? All right, there's an objection. All in favor of appending the documents in the drive as a, to our journal? Please raise your hand, all in favor. Motion fails. There's also a motion to, as passed out, to amend the title of the resolution. On that motion, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? On the motion, if no one, would you like to close on your motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think this is very difficult because here we are trying to support a region, riddled with conflict. And I think what's really needed at this time is depolarization. And we're hearing today that this is the problem that we have in our world is not being able to listen to the other side, not being able to dialogue and try to come to a compromise and understanding. And I think also just to shut down dialogue. I think this is a real concern. You know, we're seeking peace in this region when we don't even engender it here in this body alone. I find it very hypocritical that we're trying to promote, you know, protection of a region when we can't even practice it ourselves here in this body. I think just the simple addition of information, you know, wars have been started for that reason. But we must try harder here. reason, but we must try harder here. And I think this, it's unfortunate that my colleagues have not, you know, see, don't see the value in nuances and the importance of practicing democratic principles. Yeah, I'm just highly disappointed in my colleagues who choose not to include dialogue and a balanced perspective and for not really allowing other voices in the community to be heard. Soodhush Masri.
Soodhush Masri, Senator. On the motion to amend the title, all in favor, please raise your hand. On the resolution, Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a tough one. You're like walking on eggshells, and I've never been called light-footed. But, you know, if I understood the motion correctly, was the motion to upload documents to the session drive?
No, it was to add those documents to our journal as part of our discussion today. They are ready on the session drive for our review.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen this rush to the question, kill the debate, kill the discussion too many times in this term. And I think that since this morning, we've all been receipt, in receipt of the emails and the phone calls and the petitions about the other side of this issue. And I just don't think that this support Israel is as black and white as some of my colleagues might think. I mean, I got to say, I feel like we have a lot of other issues, pressing issues facing our people and our island. And I took heat, I didn't even vote for the resolution supporting Taiwan because I just feel like I don't want to get involved. I'm no historian, but I'm aware of the history. The United States helped create Hamas, and when they no longer serve our interests, we oppose them. The same thing with Osama bin Laden. Osama bin Laden was an ally of the United States in the 1980s. And anybody who knows me knows I didn't stand with Monacoya, I didn't stand with the Ukraine. I never signed a resolution supporting this or that. Because I find sometimes that we fall all over ourselves trying to stand with everybody, but at the end of the day, who's standing with us? Who's standing with us? So yeah, as long as there's, you know, doubt about what the people of Guam want us to say to the United States Congress, then I cannot in good conscience support this resolution. And I, I think it would behoove the sponsors to send it back and have that public hearing. And let's get all the voices of Guam in there and make sure that whatever we're sending over to the delegate Moylan is an accurate and true representation of what our people, all of our people believe. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized?
On the main motion, Speaker Turahi, you're recognized.
Thank you. I too think this is a tough one because we have not heard from the people of Guam their opinion on us as a legislature taking a stance on this issue, or in particular, the wording of this issue. And I think the wording is very important because, because things have really evolved since this incident first broke out. And the beginning, of course, around the world, there was shock and condemnation of Hamas. But the retaliation of Israel since then, or their self-defense, as they call it, has also brought criticism from the United Nations authorities because of the deaths of civilians and the deaths of children, and the impediments that the bombing has brought to hospitals, to aid, to water, electricity, and all of the necessities of life, and the forced evacuation when there's no place to go. These are the things that this situation has evolved. It is evolving, and we're kind of far away. We are getting our sources from, you know, some mainstream media. While I think it would be appropriate for us as a legislature to condemn the terrorist acts, I do not want by this resolution to be approving of the killing of children, of the bombing of hospitals, of the things that have been described as war crimes as well. So I would condemn all war crimes that are being done. And I think the world community is looking for a ceasefire so that those things can be stopped. The killing of innocent children can be stopped. And I would support this wholeheartedly if it called for a ceasefire, as my colleague tried to do. Because that continues to condemn terrorism, and it continues as well to say that the people of Guam are not going to support war crimes by anyone. And every day, I try to keep myself informed of the situation, but I do think that we are not fully informed, that we are semi-informed. And I read a lot of the news, I follow the, what the different governments have tried to do and what the United Nations has said as well. And I wish all of that could be put on the record, and I think we need to vote with all the information before us. If it's critical that we take a position in favor of one nation versus another nation, which is what this resolution looks like it's doing, as opposed to taking a position against terrorism, I think that would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Soodhush Masri, Madam Speaker. On the main motion, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the main motion? Last call. If there's no one who wishes to speak on the main motion, the main sponsor may close.
Sponsor may close. Senator Lujan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleagues, for the debate. Again, I just want to reiterate that this resolution is a condemnation of a terrorist act. It's not a condemnation of a race. It is definitely a condemnation of acts of terrorism as we experienced in 9/11 years back. And so with that, I want to thank my colleagues, and I motion to place again Resolution 223-37 on the third reading, at the bottom of the third reading file.
On the motion, there's been an objection, all in favor of placing the resolution on the third reading file. Please raise your hand. All right. Yes, you may. Yes. The next bill on our agenda is Bill 173, which requires the Committee of the Whole. I have asked the governor's office to ask the fiscal panel to be here at 2:00 PM in light of the state funeral, but Senators Augustine and you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to convene in the Committee of the Whole and recess until tomorrow, October 26, 23 and 3, at 11:30 AM for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Retired United States District Court Chief Justice for the District of Guam, Johnny Sablon Ampinko, and to allow the honored guests into the Speaker, Antonio R. Ampinko, let's say, to session all and that it be conducted in its formal manner.
On that motion, to convene into the Committee of the Whole and recess until tomorrow at 11:30 for the state funeral service for the late Honorable Retired United States District Court Chief Judge Johnny Sablon Ampinko. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will be resolved into Committee of the Whole. So please, the services begin at 11:30, so please be here before that. Soodhush Masri. We are recessed until tomorrow at 11:30, Committee of the Whole.